Welcome to the workshop session. And when I say clerk, please call roll.
Adams?
Here.
Bartlett?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
Hoffman?
Here.
Ottenell?
Here.
Scott? Wonkel?
Here.
Wormowski?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Mayor Ezra?
Here.
And City Attorney?
Here.
Thanks. Is that, do you have a cold or allergy?
Cold.
Okay. I'm gonna get cold for you, Steve, tonight, so...
That's fine, I have a cold too.
Okay, first item up on the agenda is under the mayor and the ordinance to discuss the liquor ordinance regarding a liquor license, and I'll kind of turn over that to Dan.
Yes.
We've got a clarification.
We've got an applicant with a double A license which allows consumption off the premises, liquor sold for consumption off the premises. He would like to get a double C license which allows for consumption on or off the premises. It is a convenience store, and while normally a switch from one classification to another doesn't necessarily require a council approval because it's not creating a new license, in this particular case, switching from double A to double C for a convenience store, allowing drinks to be poured and consumed on the premises, then allow, if they decide to go that direction, gaming. And that's something that in the past we have not really wanted to do, you have not really wanted to do. That's the issue in talking with Andy, we did not want to simply make that change because it was a monumental change without talking with the council. Mr. Patel is here, if anybody, you may have some questions or if you want to say anything?
Yeah.
Bobby?
I don't have anything, guys, I don't know.
Is that accurate? Bobby?
No.
What we just said, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So what I want to do is kind of since July 1st, this kind of business little slow down here because of the cigarettes and all that. And like, you know, thing is, I want to just bring more people, like, I just can't afford to run right now. I'm trying to do something else over there, see I can stay over there and keep the place open. That's the reason I decided to do that.
Which location is it?
619 North Prairie, Locklear and Prairie.
JP.
JP Convenience Store.
Residential area.
And just, that's current, get it counted, so?
Being liquor commissioner, Bobby's been very good working with him over the years.
I mean, if he can use...
Runs a quality, yeah, runs a quality business. I've had requests probably two dozen times in convenience stores and liquor stores wanting gaming. And we always tell them that, the council's been on record that they didn't want to go that direction. Now, I would never discourage, I've talked with Bobby about this handful of times. And I never discouraged Bobby from at least applying. If he wants to apply, then I think it needs to be brought to the council, and that's where we're at today, so... But just know that if we go down this road, which if you want to, there's going to be others that want to do it. So, we can't deny that we go...
Right, once you allow a convenience store to have a double C license, you in effect have granted that option to any convenience store in town.
Yeah.
Is this something we have to decide on?
No, not at all. This is something for your consideration. Before I would draft anything in that regard, I would suggest that if you decide to go that direction, then have some formal action by the council authorizing that, so future councils know what happened to that. But until we give directions from the council that you would like to proceed with something on this line, there'd be no action.
So, once we do this, every single gas station in town can pour like beer or like mixed drinks, or what?
If they have a liquor license now, yes.
What, you mean a liquor license or a package with their?
On premise.
Right now, they have to have. Well, there's some gas stations that have, don't have a liquor license. So they're gonna have to get a liquor license first.
So, a gas station that right now sells alcohol?
Has typically a double A license.
So, every single gas station now that you go into and sells beer, once this passes, you can buy the beer, consume it there, and gamble there theoretically?
Uh, well, it would probably be, it's a pouring license, but I think you're right. If they wanted to buy the packaged liquor and drink it right there, it's satisfied. Typically, when you have something like this, they'll have beer on tap or something along those lines. We have two gaming parlors that were grandfathered in, we don't allow any more of those, and they will just have beer in a cooler, they really don't sell that much from what I hear, at least the two in Jacksonville, I don't know how they do out east of town, it's outside the city limits. But most of the, there'd have to be a separate location, no separate set aside area. I think one of the concerns that we've had, you've had in the past is, one, granting that many gaming licenses, and two, in a convenience store as opposed to a tavern, it may be a bit more difficult to police where the gaming area is, making sure that no one under 21 is there. It has to be set aside and kind of blocked off, you'll see some just block it off with a rope between two poles, which may or may not work. But those are some of the issues that you would have.
So the, that is a proper license, you can apply for the double C?
Right now, is if you've got a double A license and you're a convenience store and you basically grant this, then all you would need to do is apply for a double C license. At that point, I would not even think it would need to come back to the council, because if they got an existing license and you're switching to double C, and you've said it's okay to do that for a convenience store for gaming, Andy should be able to issue the licenses and that shouldn't need to come back to you. But the first one is the critical one.
So like, right now, if you have a service station that has like maybe some seating or something like that, so you can sit there and eat one of the hot dogs, you could sit there, eat a hot dog and beer?
Yes.
At the minimum. Or you could wander over with your open beer and consume, or, I'm sorry, with your beer, drink beer and gamble in the direction of gambling area. So you could be at all the gas stations that now sell packaged liquor. So yeah, this is something I'd like to hear from the public in general about how they feel about where we're taking the road, so...
And so are convenience stores and gambling, the two that are grandfathered in, are they government?
Those aren't convenience stores, those are actual gaming parlors where they have some beer for sale and gaming machines. After we granted two of those, we changed the ordinance to require a certain percentage of receipts other than gaming in order to have that type of thing. So in essence, we have two gaming parlors, and unless the council changes the ordinance, there will not be any more gaming parlors. From there, you have to have a tavern license where you're able to serve beer by the drink, and then, or something by the drink, and then you can have a gaming license with that. And keep in mind that once you get the appropriate pouring license, other than getting the permit for the gaming machine, like any other machine, any other type of gaming device, the city has no control over it, we don't license.
But the pouring license itself, is that what covers under Trump?
Double C.
A convenience store and a gaming parlor, like a bar?
Uh, not necessarily.
So would all the employees have to go through like the?
Basset training.
Basset training, and we have to have insurance for all that?
But they would have to monitor. They have to.
They'd have to, the pouring?
Yeah, the pouring, they'd have to have a basset training for that.
Are you changing the facility at all?
What I was wondering, I mean, all the...
As in, your structure, or are you just gonna put them in a corner?
I'm gonna put right on the corner where like if I can get into these, I really want the house next to it, I want to throw down this wood building, or leave in the whole place over there.
So the other question is, how does this relate to the truck driving licenses?
Truck stops.
Truck stops, so you have to have a certain footprint of what acres?
Three acres.
And then you have to have a certain amount of diesel sales?
To a thousand gallons a month.
To get that, then you could have a gambling license. But are those existing facilities, they have pouring licenses?
No.
No.
They don't have.
Automatically, because they sell 10,000 gallons, so they automatically...
Separate, separate diesel pumps, 10,000 gallons per month and three acres, they can have those machines running 24 hours. And the state just passed, they haven't implemented it yet, that they'll be able to have 10 machines as well.
And then those driving, truck stops? Loaded in truck stops or?
Truck stops.
Only, because otherwise it's loaded to six under the new legislative...
It's five, the new is six, but they have not let us implement that yet. Do we know how many double Cs do we have right now?
I don't know, Pam, currently, I don't want to put you on the spot.
What?
Um, double Cs, we'd probably easily have, we'd probably easily have about 15 to 20.
Yeah.
And then, do the existing truck stop licenses that have the gambling license, could they get a double C, and then they can pour the two at the truck stops?
If, yeah, if they wanted to, they wanted to.
The purpose of getting this is so they could have the machines. If they have the machines, they don't need the pouring license.
I think if they wanted to have the machines and have people drink while they're at the machines, they could apply for double C and...
So what we're really talking about is getting the double C and doubling it? Because everybody that can apply, that has, and then so, but then we have the same amount of people, it's not like for them to, it's just more of a place for people to do their to go, more opportunity for the businesses that are here to have? Is that pretty much the case? So basically, what we're doing is make all these taverns? Basically.
Right. You gotta think about that.
That's right.
And so, I'm not sure, for the newer aldermen, in 2014, we had 17 locations in town that had gaming machines, now we have 30 that the city is giving up and doing on. And I'm happy to show this to anyone who wants to look at it.
Well, I think Steve, I think you know, we're here for public interest. So is there anything you can add to city gaming and pouring to tax it?
We receive a percentage of the receipts now, other municipalities have a higher gaming license than we do.
You're gonna get automatically 5% of gaming revenue right off the top. Unofficially, I would say that the taxes on the stickers that can be put on there can be at your discretion. So that's the only, that's the whole thing about taxing is discouraging bad behavior. So if we're looking at doubling the amount of liquor pours, then we're gonna have to look at taxing it to where we don't want that many to double.
Well, I think one other consideration you have is that we purposely limited gaming parlors to two, because to an extent, when the law was first passed, it was going to be truck stops. And if I recall, one of the major expenses was to help some of the service clubs and so forth with resources that they needed. And, but by bringing them in, that it also involved taverns with the pouring license, and it's expanded from quite a bit since then. We've had, you know, parlors, pouring licenses, quite often when a building comes up for sale in a nice location, Andy will get a call for a new business which basically wants to sell some sandwiches but have pouring license for gaming, so...
That's one other consideration, because when we say no, we're only want two, what happens is the village of South Jacksonville will just give out a license, I think whoever will ask, or you can go out to the counties, I know there's one right outside of the city limits, so we're trying to control it, and we're basically, it's happening already.
That is a consideration.
And it's happening outside the city, we're not getting the revenue. So I don't know, it's kind of like a question of, do we want to be the ones in charge of limiting gambling, or do you just let the market figure it out?
What do you currently charge for the gaming machines?
A hundred dollars per year. And that's pretty low. And that's something we could take a look at.
Sir, may I ask your name?
Michael Rowtramel, with Excel Entertainment.
Okay. So what do you, what do you see normally as the average?
I've seen as low as, you're saying a hundred dollars per place?
Machine.
Per machine? Hundred dollars per machine, up to, I've seen as high as a thousand. But what the thousand does is, the small places like your American Legions that this was meant to help to begin with, we can't afford, not just us but other companies, we can't afford to keep them with our machines. So somewhere between a hundred and 500, nobody's writing this down, are they?
No.
Thank you.
It's one of your reporting.
Okay, somewhere between there, you get much over $500 gaming machine, and suddenly the smaller bars, the gaming can't, can't afford to keep them in there. Because they're, I mean, they're $25,000 per machine. So that's, that's basically what's going to be limiting, is how many can afford to put them in there. And then what we're looking at is not trying to hurt establishments, we're trying to help them survive. If there is something we can do, we should look at it, but how it's taxed, the revenue coming from the establishments that are getting the help, we should look at how we can do that to where it limits it to what we're talking about, where some of the places might not be able to afford it, even though you'll be doubling your liquor pouring, you still have some of them falling out, so it might only be 25% increases.
But the other side to look at that is, if, if a small business is looking, or depending upon this revenue to help sustain the business, and you put an extra tax on or an extra fee, that business shuts down, so then it's opposite, so we don't have jobs, now we have a baby.
Is that a good business plan to plan on gambling to survive?
No, but there are a lot of people doing it, that's part of the reason why he just said...
When I sold, I sold liquor for 30 years before I started doing this. And I could tell you, without having stats in front of me, between 50 and 70% of the accounts I called on out of the country would not have been open without the machines. They pay for an awful lot of cents. You gotta figure the gaming companies pay for the machines, the upkeep, filling them, basically the account is providing a safe, warm place to put them. So it, it's not exactly free money, but it's pretty close.
And the other consideration is, at what point do you reach a saturation of machines? And maybe we're not anywhere near that yet, but if we have, I don't know how many convenience stores we have in town, seven or eight maybe?
And the problem is that the existing license holders don't want us to give any license anywhere else because they want to protect their market.
That's it.
So is that up to us to determine that, or is it up to the people who are doing gambling to determine that? I guess one other thing on this line, when we first brought up the license and fees for gambling machines, I had suggested, and Bruce McDaniel voted with me, that we could make a different fee structure where a regular business would pay one fee, and a club or service organization that has gambling machine could pay a different monthly fee. That didn't happen, but maybe if we do increase the fee per gaming machine, can keep the same price for American Legion and other groups that have, have a better nonprofits or service organizations.
And I want to check on that, I don't know if you've run into that anywhere, which was the different?
Let's be clear, I'm not a lawyer.
Okay.
I would think, I've never seen that, but I would think that there would be something that you could do like that, or maybe a rebate back to them.
Got it, sir.
And what do you mean, available to others?
See, you may have a very admirable purpose in trying to support service clubs, Legion or so forth, but you're basically charging different rates to the same type of business, tavern or service club, so...
Well, you also can throw this in there.
It was supposed to support, I'm just questioning whether it was legal. Yeah, I agree. And if, you know, if the research indicates that you can have a fee structure that favors one over another.
Didn't tell me that the first time.
I didn't even think about it at that time.
You know, something else to consider is that those are not-for-profit.
I should have put this out before when we had this discussion too, one of the things that came up is, you know, what is this inter-Jacksonville want to be known for? Yes, we can have these competitors outside of city limits, or South Jacksonville, who, if people are putting their hard-earned cash into machines, which is their own rights, what, what kind of repercussions could there be for extra pressure on nonprofit organizations that where people can't pay their bills, and they need additional resources, they're unable to buy groceries because they're putting money in the machine? That was a point of contention for us before, and one of the reasons why we limited our gaming parlors to two, for that reason as well. So I share that with all of you, just as a reminder of why we made that decision previously as well.
The same argument can be made on alcohol.
Sure.
You know, it's, it's somewhat about self-policing. You've got, what did you say, 30?
There's 30 now.
30 gaming, but how many, there's 42 liquor licenses?
No, there's more than 50.
Over 50?
Probably not, 55.
And it's, it's the same argument that I got when I used to sell liquor, that people that couldn't pay their bills because they were buying alcohol, it's, it's a self, and I'm not saying right or wrong, I'm just saying that the gaming, it's, it's a self-policing type of thing. But as far as your, because I've run into this before, where there were communities that wouldn't allow any gaming because they thought they were protecting the gambling boats, they're not, they'll just go across city lines.
Can I, I understand your, your position, of course, you could chill business and your industry, and you too want to protect it. The same token, as a parent, as a member of this community as well, every time I walk my child into a convenience store, or a gas station, or a restaurant, or a bar, I think there's a lot of people in town who probably would prefer to not have it in their face every time they go somewhere.
Sure.
So, there's, there are two sides, and I appreciate what you're saying, because I, again, for the other side, there's a lot of families who would also like to not have it every time they turn around.
Sure.
Actually, I'm, I'm running a topic, I, I previously, earlier this year when they did the review, they hung the anniversary of the institute of the state law about a lot of the gambling. I contacted Senator Steve McClure and Representative CD Davis Meyer, and said that we needed, the state needs to increase the tax rate, because compared to other states, Illinois has a very low tax rate. So I think this is something where it was, it was the gambling legislation was written by the gambling industry, and I wish statewide that that was something that the state could figure out and have like a higher rate. And I also have one, one question for you.
Sure.
Which they did raise that.
Good. So, I only have limited time, so I didn't follow up on this conversation I have with someone, I didn't have enough information. But she said that in one of the gambling establishments, she saw someone in there who was, who was gambling and shaking all the time. And I know that if you're on Parkinson's medicine, that could make you susceptible to being addicted to gambling. Do any of the operators receive any training on identifying people who might have medically...
At this point, they don't have anything similar to, I think, I think they should, but they don't have anything similar to the basset training.
Okay. And that's something that, oh, everyone who runs a session like this in the general public needs to know, that if you are in some Parkinson's medicine, makes you more susceptible to being addicted to gambling. So if you have anyone who's on Parkinson's medicine and they're gambling, you need to talk to a doctor, or talk to something to get some help.
And that is something that you could, I don't know if you want to legislate something like that here locally, but that is something that, just like the CC, limited to beer and wine, where there's not hard alcohol, limit the amount. The parlors, generally speaking, don't, the money doesn't stay here, you know, because of chains, whereas the places that, for the most part, that are asking, like Bobby, that's money that's staying in your community as well, something to consider. And we're really not talking about increasing the amount of gamblers or people who use alcohol in our community by adding more liquor pouring or gaming facilities, we're just giving the, the businesses that are here the tools that they need to supplement their budget to be able to survive in our community.
And also letting the people who choose to gamble choose, choose where they want to gamble.
And then that's what thins out where the gambling machines and the liquor pouring, if we give all the people the ability to use the tools that they need to survive, then that'll figure out where people go, it's not, I, I don't think anybody thinks it's going to increase the amount of people who use alcohol and gamble here, it's just where they're gonna go.
Can we make it, I'm sorry, can we make it to where it's hidden at least? Because out of the truck stop, my dad's a truck driver, but they've got a room where it's blacked outdoors, and if they're gonna have alcohol and gamble, my brother, especially with the alcohol, it would be a little more hidden, because when I, when I send it to the truck stop, he likes those machines, they're spinning and light up and all that, and that's not enough, I just, I worry.
And maybe that's something we can consider with the...
Yeah, to make it more out of the...
If it's gonna double, we can require that they be more closed off with more than just a rate.
That's something that's not under our...
And state regulates.
State regulates that portion of it. So we don't actually, do we, we don't give out the gambling licenses?
We have nothing to do with it.
So once they have alcohol?
You can.
We can do specifications?
You can have local gaming licenses. The way it works in the state, you get your local liquor license before you get, to get your state, but it's just the opposite with the gaming license. The state issues that, does all the background checks, but a lot of communities that I deal with have local gaming licenses as well, another form of taxation.
So you need to have their state license, and they get a city license for you?
Yes, sir. Just like with the liquor license. I know that when we initially set this up, and like Laura was saying, we had, I mean, when we heard from the community, they, they didn't want a gaming spot on every corner of the street. And I think if they want one convenience store, that's probably what you're gonna see, is that, we're all gonna do it. We've actually turned down one before. So, I remember, and that's, that's why we limited it to two parlors, so we didn't want parlors popping up without being a non-for-profit or a bar. So, I mean, I think we've kind of done down this road.
One other thing, currently our Class AA, which all of our convenience stores are issued, are beer and wine only. So if a Class CC is permitted, then they'll also have all alcohol beverages. So, that would include your Walmarts, your county markets, your all these, all the grocery stores here in town. So, that's currently how it's treated.
Unless we change our...
Right.
It's a question of, we limit pouring licenses, because if a convenience store, and we have now some that, which we don't have gasoline, we just have a convenience store, Walgreens, so there's been other chains, large chains that have asked us about these types of things too.
So as I said before, basically, we just, we don't have much taverns.
Well, I mean...
If everybody with a A applies for CC and gets it, I mean, like you said, we do warn...
Technically, yeah, they could turn it out, I mean, just that, unless we completely change the whole liquor ordinance and, and renew classifications and go through the whole process, I mean, that's...
That's a, it's a...
Because the liquor stores, well, I mean, I, every liquor store in this town has one of them, and I've always said, we don't permit. Well, I guarantee you they'll ask, but in essence, the convenience stores will become liquor stores. When I say liquor spirits, I mean, the alcohol, the whiskey and the vodka and stuff, every one of them could have that CC, and then they'll be able to, so...
And keep in mind, the CC is basically for all premises, I'm sorry, on premises consumption. Before any of us were involved in the council, it goes back 25 years for me, there was a trend that every time a liquor license for a tavern was turned in, it was abolished, and gradually reduced the number of taverns from many years ago when you had a corner taverns, down as low as it is now. We haven't really issued a tavern license back in the crawl, anytime the recent passed, because there's been a trend to limit the number of taverns. This obviously is a move the other direction.
So is this something we should do a special study on, is look at whether we want a Walmart bar with a CC, or reestablish our liquor code? And then the public can have some input in it.
I think we should just, I think you should listen to some of your constituencies' names. Your child, you're, you're gonna hear, you're gonna hear from the other convenience stores, you're also gonna hear from the tavern homers. I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna try to protect themselves, I mean, I...
Before you make this study, I think you need to kind of go that route.
Yeah, I think we just kind of let it evolve for a while, and if you're, if we're all really serious about changing it, and you do that at an appropriate time, that's... that's the direction I would go. And I don't mean to delay it, but Bobby's, we've talked for years on this, and I might be afraid to wait a little bit, but.
Yes, Oliver Adams, I don't see this as a special studies committee job, but I see this as a liquor commissioner, a liquor commission job. You're trying to make more work.
No, I never said to go to special studies. All right. Very good. The next one up is city attorney's report.
Thank you. Short one and a long one. First, we discuss internet service agreement with Cast Cable TV. This is just to switch to Cast Cable TV for the internet service out at the substation. Castcom, hundred and ten dollars per month for the internet service.
And what we're doing is, in line with the IT gentleman's five-year plan, they're, they're proposing to retire the existing phone system at the street, farm, water, land, fire department, substation. So this is the first leg of eliminating, and they would get, go into contract with Castcom, which can provide it.
And I'd like to add that Castcom, for the hundred and ten dollars a month, there's thirty dollars a month more, and twenty tons of I three, had talked about getting here with their broadband connection for what Mark Latham with Highland have produced for his community, which is doing very well with their municipal broadband system. So, that is something that we need to consider while we're spending four thousand dollars over the next three years for just the substation on cable.
How long is it turning for?
Three years, thirty-six months.
Is it close to, are there IP phones or?
Real quick, this is the, the internet only. This is not cable. And basically, what we're running out there is the same phone system that was put in that station when it was built back in the seventies, is the same system that's running now. And, and we can't sustain it. The whole system has to be bettered up.
And I'm not knocking that the firemen need internet or cable. They should have both. But what we're doing is paying too much for it from Castcom, instead of getting some kind of infrastructure for broadband, like we have talked about, because it's so much cheaper and so much faster to produce it for our, and we don't even have to charge them. If we have it, if we own it, we could provide it to them for free.
Well, maybe in three years, we'll have it. Maybe we could, like, put a couple million dollars to do it, and then we can just get them free.
There was all kinds of, there was all kinds of funding for it. I might remind everybody that four hundred and twenty million dollars was just reallocated to the reconnect program from USDA for exactly this purpose.
Was that your short one or your long one?
I thought it was the short one. Let's get to the other one. If there's no further question on that. Discuss adult-use cannabis issues. Really, two things I want to review with you. The first, we've been talking about the zoning ordinance that we would have for adult-use cannabis facilities going forward. Learned quite a bit at a seminar at the municipal league convention just this past week. And there is a very good model ordinance on the IML website, and Brandon just shared with you about four o'clock, three o'clock, the link to get there. And I'd suggest that all of you take a look at that ordinance. The things that we need to give some direct, so got to in some direction, really have two different ways to proceed. One is to decide what zones you want them in. We pretty much looked at B two and above in the business district. But then decide, you want to do that as a special use in each district, so you have control over setting parameters and conditions in that district for the special use, which means every time someone wants to open one of these adult-use cannabis facilities, they have to come to the plan commission and then back to council for resolving before you act on it. That's kind of the direction the IML model ordinance takes. An alternate direction is an example of that is the Quincy adult-use cannabis ordinance, where in each zoning district, they built in the requirements that they would have. How much distance from various locations and so forth, hours of operation. So that it's not necessary, that's a permitted use rather than a special use in any zoning district. So it's not necessary to come back to plans, commission, and council. They are able to operate, open and operate without any council action. It's ours, Kelly and I, impressions that you would want to keep some control over the process, and do it in the form of a special use for whichever district you want. Beyond that, we had talked about primarily a dispensary, state law mandates, they cannot be any closer than fifteen hundred feet to another one. So as we talk about perhaps having, allowing one downtown, it would only be one, because fifteen hundred feet's gonna encompass quite a ways, circumference around the downtown area. We talked a little bit about a craft grower, that's a small grower. The Department of Agriculture regulate. Cultivation centers, those are the ones that are already in place. We're probably not gonna get one of those. Dispensaries, we've talked about, but other types of businesses, there are, there will be companies springing up that will be infusing cannabis, or the, the adult-use cannabis. There's processing types of plants. There are transportation organizations that are gonna be doing this. And the model ordinance, rather than just say, okay, zoning in B two, B three, and B four, the special use for a dispensary and/or a, I haven't mentioned, but a lounge is another possibility. The model ordinance covers all that at one time, so what we're leaning to is basing something on the model ordinance as a special use. So you have an opportunity to review each one that comes, that wants to locate in Jacksonville, but include all of these, so we don't have to come in piecemeal. If someone does come in at some later date and wants to open a parlor, we've got it on the books as to what needs to be done, rather than have to go back and change the ordinance at that time. One side note to that, the point made in our seminar at the municipal league, we don't really expect a lot of parlors to be springing up. The example we used is in Denver, Colorado, which has had adult-use cannabis for hour long. There were two. There's now one parlor in Denver. And the reason for that is as much as we compare this industry to the existing alcohol industry with taverns, we can go and have a cocktail. There's a whole body of laws set up, the ram shop laws, that offer insurance for those operators, those tavern owners, that limit their liability for any accidents that may occur because someone got over searched. There's nothing on the market like that for adult-use cannabis. And the indication was that, one, if you had someone that was gonna open a parlor, you want to look very closely at them, their finances and so forth, because the business model says, don't open a parlor because of the liability you're gonna incur. So, that was news to me. I didn't know that there was such a shortage of those types of entities. Any questions on that part? So what, your homework is, I guess, we're still looking at what kind of distance you want, and what kind of separation you want from other types of activities. Quincy, for example, has a hundred-foot separation between most of these adult-use cannabis entities and a church, or a school, or something like that. And that seems like a reasonable distance, much like we have with some alcohol issues. That's really what I need to hear back from you. What I'd like to do then, if that sounds all right, is Kelly and I work towards putting together, based on the IML model, and take a look at it on the website. Based on that, putting together an ordinance that would cover all aspects of the cannabis industry, not just resolving B two, B three, and B four classifications to a liability. Any questions?
Don't discount the craft grow facility, because I know there's someone in Ward Five who has a son who used to be grow marijuana in Costa Rica, and now he's in Washington, or Seattle, or Washington, or Oregon.
Oregon.
So, could come here. There's another, one of my neighbors, he has a friend who's a farmer up by industry, and he has a state grow facility, and he was interested in doing something down here too.
No, that's exactly right.
We, we're not gonna, we're not gonna get a big facility like Lincoln or Berry, God, they could scan up the corner job, but we could have something that's a craft grow.
Ten or twelve, something like that. Okay. The other issue's a bit more tricky.
Hold on, Brandon.
Oh, sorry.
That craft grow must have a dispensary license.
I think that's right. Revenue and taxation from adult-use cannabis. The bill is passed this summer. Provides that municipality, if it authorizes adult-use cannabis businesses in its town, can impose a tax up to three percent, three percent sales tax on all of those products. The statute provides that that tax will go into effect September first of 2020. Which made things fairly simple. You've got plenty of time to consider, who you want to approach that, how much of the tax? You want to go three percent, two percent, because of competition, or whatever you want to do. Well, there's been some discussion that that statute may be amended to provide for the sales to take place as of January first, and the tax to be imposed as of January first. Which presents a problem, because the statute is written, doesn't require any action right now. If you want to be on board with being able to levy the tax, as soon as you have one of these entities in town doing some sort of business, after January first, prior to September twentieth, you have to adopt an ordinance imposing the tax, get certified over to the Department of Revenue by next Tuesday. There's been at least a couple. Springfield and Quincy have both done this, that passed this tax. And it makes a lot more sense for them in one regard. They already have a medical facility, oh, with a medical cannabis facility. A medical cannabis is not taxed. But they also have kind of a first step towards getting a dispensary for adult-use cannabis, the way the laws are set up. And those are the ones, Canton, for example, those are the ones that they're already talking about licensing issue, because it's kind of an adjunct to these existing facilities. From what we learned up there, the process to even get licensed and up and running may not take place for as quickly as we could do it. May not take place until sometime halfway through the year next year. But if, one other thought. In checking with Department of Revenue, and every source that we could come up with, there's no magic to this October first date. You can't go anywhere and see if you want it, if it should come into effect January one, you have to have it by October first. That's a recommendation from the municipal league, because in the past, Department of Revenue has always wanted at least three months lead time to implement a new tax to municipality, because they've got to get it out on their website, get all the collection things set up. Which begs the question, if the statute is amended, it's gonna be in veto session, which is gonna be in November, which only gives Department of Revenue if it passes. About six weeks to get everything set up across the state, as opposed to the three months that they want, so most thinking is that it's not gonna be amended to set up the January first date. But if it is, I don't want to be the one to say, ah, don't worry about it. Your option, I've passed or distributed a draft ordinance that would impose a three percent tax, effective January one, assuming that the state goes that direction. Again, it has to be over Department of Revenue, basically, next Monday. Which require that a special meeting sometime between now and next Monday to
Has to be the next Monday or next Tuesday?
It's, it has to be certified then by October first, which means it has to be in the mail, postmarked by Monday. So what we would be talking about doing is probably hand-carrying it over there if you decide to do this. And that's no problem. We can get it over there Monday, it's adopted. But the earliest you could have a meeting with the notices that you have to give is gonna be Thursday. Sometime Thursday, day or night, sometime Friday, day or night. If you want to go this direction, and it's a precautionary measure to make sure that if they change the law, and if you have somebody set up actually selling some product in Jacksonville prior to September first, you're gonna have the ability to tax it and collect revenue on it. If you wait, first of all, if the law doesn't change, if you pass this now, you'll start receiving tax revenues that are not collected until next September. If they do adopt it as of January first, then presumably you would have tax revenues coming in from the first point of sale. Brandon?
I, you slightly misspoke, medical is taxed at one percent, and what we're talking about is a recreational cannabis tax of three percent. Because medical is not taxed at the local level. But the, the recreational is still up for grabs, because they're, they're just given first choice to all the medical, and then in what sometime next year will be when the craft grow licenses will be issued, so they're not even really up for any kind of, so you know, this would probably strictly be for just the recreational dispensary, and then when a craft grow licenses are permitted, then that would probably be in the 2021. But I, I imagine this is gonna cover, that three percent will cover it.
So is this local, up to three percent local sales tax, is some top of the state sales tax? So would it be like, so like right now, if you sell a product, and it's recreational, it would be the eight percent, right? So it'd be seven percent, and one, and one percent for, for schools, for county, and then we could add in that sort of three percent on?
That's my understanding, but it's limited now.
Does money go into the gaming fund, a separate fund?
It goes wherever you want it to.
I don't think there's any.
Can we allocate it however we want to?
Sure.
So some to schools, some to, 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 all pensions. That has to come under.
Spring, if, if I could speak, Springfield just did this. They did one point five to economic development, one point five to pensions. That just passed last week.
We don't have earmarked it when we pass it?
No, no, that's a decision.
If we pass this, can we amend it at any time?
Yes, but you, in amending it, it won't go into effect, the amendment won't go into effect with Department of Revenue until a certain point. With most municipal taxes, it's July one or January one that goes into effect. So for example, if you pass three percent, we got up and running, and you decide that's too much, you want to reduce it to two and a half percent, and you pass that in July of next year, it would not go into effect until January first, but you can amend it certainly, or you could abolish it down the road if you want to.
If it's special week, we're gonna have the first reading, and if that is emergency, that's what you'd need to do.
So are we talking, we should do it on Thursday or Friday, or should we do it on Monday?
I would not wait till Monday to do it.
So Thursday or Friday?
Thursday or Friday.
So I, I, I would like to propose that we do this, and have the meeting be Thursday or Friday. And at first, I was a little rancid about passing a higher tax. I thought one percent would be sufficient. But after some research, the general taxes are low on, on recreational marijuana, so I think a three percent tax would be good. Especially if, if you don't have to earmark it, but I know pensions need the money. So, we could get other things that, that we figure out.
Maybe just an indication, Thursday or Friday of preference?
Either's fine.
Wednesday, I'm not sure. We have enough time to get it done for forty-eight hours. Spend enough time to get the notice out.
So who's available Thursday?
Friday.
Because you're gonna get it over there for print tomorrow, and it won't be printed until Wednesday morning, and it's forty-eight hours.
So probably Friday, and what time Friday would, morning, you have it.
My kid will be in school, so that's.
At any time, Friday.
I'm available.
So we're talking Friday?
Friday.
So, sure.
Who's available Friday evening? Well, you need at least five or six, what's the requirement?
Six.
Six. Who's available Friday evening?
When you talk in evening?
Uh, when someone could drive back after five to work.
After six?
After, like, seven o'clock, Friday evening.
And you have the morning stuff. I'm, I'm meeting for Friday.
Friday.
Friday is homecoming.
Let's have a, how many could make it at Friday at noon?
Friday night's not a, Friday is not a good night.
Maybe lunch there.
Maybe do that. Or we could put that in their Russian space.
So, wanna go with Friday at noon? So especially for those of you who are not gonna be here, any comments, is this the direction that you wanna go, or any main objections to what we're looking to do? It's basically a protective measure.
I'd be giving three percent.
I have no hesitation in acting on it and doing it. I hesitate, not no one, rather, one, two, three percent is ideal, but economic development is a... We're all gonna come to us because we only charge one percent? That was my anxiety question too, and that also... That was the question with South Jacksonville, maybe not even being on the ball, and versus at zero percent, is that gonna attract them to like the South Jacksonville first? That'd be my hesitation.
Is there anyone in the public who wants to speak on this? They're welcome to come certainly Friday.
Yeah.
Sherry, are you here?
I have a question. As a practical matter though, my understanding is the only people that can get the license on January one are people who are existing dispensaries.
Exactly.
They're not even issued these things until beginning of July. They're not even really operating. And a lot, a lot of the research that I've done, because I've looked into it, the fair amount is the higher the tax, the less money you get in tax. That's one question I found, what I can, I had a question about the tax, like, on the gambling machines. And to go from seventeen to thirty in five years, has there been a proportional increase in tax revenue? And, and the same thing, I think there hasn't. And I think that what I see in studies is that the higher the tax that's tacked on, the less activity. It, it doesn't, it doesn't result in more tax revenue.
I think we're subject to our, shall I say, our players, they just spread it out.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, three percent, you know, one percent, two percent, three percent. I mean, if it's big volume, that's a big number.
And even if it's two and a half, that's still a half a percent less than three, and it might actually be the deciding difference between a three and a two and a half.
Hopefully they can do it, not do it.
But anyway, you've got the draft ordinance at three percent, if there's gonna be a change in that, let me know real quick, so I can have it ready for Friday.
Well, I would suggest we do it at three percent. And then if we talk to a specific developer, if we need to lower it to a lower amount to make it so that the business would work out, because as was mentioned, we are competing with other places in the state.
And that, three percent, would that apply to like the transportation, and if those businesses are located here?
It's a sales tax, so it depends on where it applies.
So then all of those, you'd be up to discretion on what the tax would be, like, from what you was just mentioning?
And if we're at one percent, so we're down the road right there.
Or just look down the middle, go one and a half?
And the other question too is, well, what's Springfield have?
Three.
They went three, didn't they?
Yeah.
A lot of places are going three. But that they have them, and they're not trying to attract them, that's the only difference.
That's the main thing, right off, we don't attract one, and basically everyone from Jacksonville that wants to do it, just grab from Springfield, and Springfield can get our money. Money that we're going to pension.
Springfield's got, have dispensaries. Grant, Grant, you and Springfield are both, I know, I know Grant was looking at another recreation because the president better said, he, he's totally against recreational, but all four are another recreational cannabis because he knows how much revenue it brings to the rural community apparently.
Okay, that's all I got.
I wanted to address Mike's question. From 2018 to this year, we're up about eighteen thousand dollars in the annual receipts in one year.
What's that proportional to the, I mean, how's that relative to the number? I don't know what the baseline was.
I haven't computed it, but...
But it's not a lot, it's not a huge injury, it's not, you almost doubled it.
Less was a hundred and ninety-five, this year's two hundred and twelve, are the city's portion.
And you almost doubled the number of, of facilities, but you didn't get any tax revenue.
Okay, we're gonna have to turn the workshop and go and finish, is it the other room?
I also had some, the weed maps had a vendor at the IML conference here this week. And one of them was in your package. There's also three other ones that I drafted about. And you have a little market for cannabis, it's still engaging, so I don't know if anybody would like to go in. Look at this, or get a copy of this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd ask the clerk to please call roll.
Adams?
Here.
Bartlett?
Here.
Cook?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Lonergan?
Here.
O'Neil?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Wonkel?
Here.
Wormowski?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Rayarzit?
Here.
City Attorney Beard?
Here.
Do you have a call?
Okay, is, should I go on to... Yeah, let's go, committee reports this evening, Planning and Public Works, Alderman Scott.
We have one item, discuss awarding bid for construction of a block wall and foundation at 201 East Morgan Avenue.
This is the complete project, tip on us on East Morgan, two buildings down. We've got some work to do, obviously, on that joint wall. The bid that came in on our old Main Street local company, a hundred and sixty-six thousand, one forty-eight, is the loaned engineer's estimate of a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So we're gonna proceed with approval.
That was completing the wall and leveling that out, wasn't it? That's what I thought.
Primary on the wall, yeah.
Yes, the wall work needs to be done, but, you know, okay.
Okay, any discussion for that?
I see no problem with it, so.
Uh, Public Protection.
We have two items. We have two items, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, okay. Uh, number one, discuss shoot house project. We have Chief Mefford here for that one. Would you like to?
Most of you remember, I came a few months ago and said that the state of Illinois was going to offer up forty thousand dollars of their money to help bring more training to our training center out by Lake Jacksonville. And I'd just like the permission from the council, that money is in our hands now. And we'd like permission from the council to go out and start getting some bids for that project.
Would you like to explain, does everybody know what the shoot house would be?
So we've, and I don't know if I've reminded everybody, or told everybody, that we've changed gears from initially that it will not be a live-fire shoot house, it'll be for simunition only. It reduces the liability and any chance for accidents by having the simunitions.
Was that still under the same cost?
Yeah, actually, it will reduce, it's gonna reduce the cost because we do not need to have the filled walls and the bullet traps and such. So it's actually, we're gonna be able to do more for less, so to speak, with, with the funds now.
When you say simulation, would you be doing like the paint pellet ones?
Yeah, they, about a year ago, we bought conversions. We used to have to borrow simunition weapons from the state, and basically they're firearms and they shoot projectiles that are filled with paint or soap. Usually they were soap, so if you hit somebody's wall, you can wipe it off and it comes off real easy. However, we purchased our own, and now we can transfer our own weapons, so we're training with our own guns instead of somebody else's. So we have the conversion kits for all of our own guns now.
Okay, don't move. Number two, discuss declaring certain equipment as surplus property. I do believe that falls under you.
Yeah, so in the last year and a half since I took over, we've been doing a lot of cleaning up. For some reason, we've been storing a lot of things for years that are basically surplus and no good to us anymore. For example, we have Ford Crown Victoria cages, seats, and center consoles, which we don't own but one, Crown Victoria. So I'd like permission to get rid of stuff like that. Also, we have the KSC twenty-four radio chargers that I found in a box, and I believe those were from Chief Cook. So these are things that have really relatively no value, not that Chief Cook didn't have value, but we, we're wanting to just get rid, the old arbitrator camera system last year is where we got a grant and we put all new in-car cameras in. So we'd like to get rid of some of this stuff. And not to say that none of it has value, we initially, I'm asking for permission, one, to get rid of it, and two, some of it will be recycled. That's just, it's just, there's no reason to keep it. I'd like to advertise through other police agencies across the state and see if there are smaller agencies or departments that could use some of the equipment as parts or spares. For instance, the arbitrator camera systems are outdated for us and other larger agi, middle to large agencies, but some smaller agencies could benefit from that. So I'd like from permission to give that out as, as I see fit, with your permission. And of course, the old uniforms, those will be, the patches will be removed and disposed of.
That's it? Thank you, Chief.
Well, we do have the minutes this evening, is there a motion to...
Make a motion to accept the minutes?
Alderman Hopkins, second by Alderman Adderstens.
All those in favor of the minutes being approved, please respond by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Presentation of petitions.
No petitions.
And we do have communications?
We do have communications.
Okay.
This is from Kristen Jamison at fifteen forty-five mound. Uh, they wanna do a block party, they've done it before. So they'll go from twelve noon to six P.M. That'll be from Pittner and City Place on mound between there. We've had no problems in the past, Chief.
Don't they block out Pittner?
Oh, they're, they're blocking off from Pittner to City, I think is what they're talking about. And the other one is a, oh, I'm sorry, October thirteenth, Sunday, Sunday, October thirteenth, twelve noon to six P.M. And the other one is a, another block party for Finley Street, this one's been going on a long time. They'll just block off Finley Street from Lafayette to State. And they just invite everybody to eat and eat. That is on Friday, October fourth. And that'll be from, excuse me, October fifth, um, Saturday, October fifth, from three to ten P.M. They're asking for barricades on the fourth, so we'll get the barricades. Les takes the barricades out there the day before, so they've got them for the weekend, and then he goes out and picks them up on Monday when they're all done with them. So if there's no problems with that, we'll go ahead and let them know that everything is okay.
Questions? Very good. Uh, City Attorney's report.
Thank you. We've got the one item, a resolution approving internet service agreement with CAS Cable TV for Jacksonville Fire Department substation.
Is there a motion? Alderman Cook, second by Alderman Large Old Nettle?
It resolved that the service agreement between the City of Jacksonville and CAS Cable TV is hereby approved.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to remind everybody about the broadband study that Dusty Douglas had presented to us that is five years old now. And, you know, we're, we could have it revised with the bill that we're providing to the fire department for their internet service. So we should look at what we can do to see what our options are currently.
Any other discussion? I would ask the clerk to please call, please call roll.
Adams?
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lonergan?
Yes.
Old Nettle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Wormowski?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion to passes.
Uh, any public comment at this time? Okay, consent agenda items tonight, finance, IT, and personnel, Alderman Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we only have one item tonight. City Treasurer's report for August thirty-first, twenty nineteen, which is in your pocket.
Thank you. And public, Planning and Public Works, Alderman Scott?
We have one item, a resolution awarding bid for the construction of a block wall and foundation at 201 East Morgan Avenue.
And Public Protection, Alderman Hopkins?
We have two items. Number one, resolution authorizing advertisement for bids for the Jacksonville Police Department Shoot House. Number two, resolution declaring certain Jacksonville Police Department equipment as surplus property and authorizing the manner of disposal.
And Utility, Alderman Wonkel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, one item tonight, resolution authorizing payments from Water Works and Sewers Project Fund for services rendered improvement projects, and I so move.
Is there a second on the consent agenda, Alderman Scott? You've heard the items under the consent agenda, is there any wish to pull for further discussion at this time?
No.
Seeing none, I would ask the clerk to please call roll.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lonergan?
Yes.
Old Nettle?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Wormowski?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Motion to passes.
Is there, at this time, any old business? Business, any new business? Alderman Wormowski?
Well, a couple of things. Heard some feedback from the public, some of whom have been coming to the meetings. And one was a request that when we speak, that we speak into the microphone. This is something we've heard from Skip before for, for taking minutes, probably many times. But now the public is requesting that we speak into the microphones. So just a reminder for everybody. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, uh, someone sent me some of the pension stories that came up, and specifically from Peoria and Springfield. They got some big numbers that they have to make additional payments to their pensions for, for, um, fire and police pensions. I know the, our pension boards, fire and police pension boards met earlier this month, and they discussed the numbers from the end of December thirty-first, twenty eighteen, and what that means for how much we'll have to contribute. I wasn't able to go to the meeting, I just wanted to know if anybody has information about what's coming or any, what the numbers look like, or if there's any information available yet for us.
They're all higher. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but they are higher.
Is that something that's coming up on agenda for one of the upcoming meetings for...
Oh, that, that's what we do for, for the tax levy.
Right.
We'll do that in November, talk about it, to get that levy put in for the pensions and the general fund. It's through the budget process.
Do you have the, do you have the minutes from the meeting that you can forward to all the aldermen in advance?
I do not.
Uh, Ron, Ron Smoljanek may have those. I can ask him to forward them.
Yeah, if you could ask, I think, actually, I think Phil is the one who's the secretary or something like that, or? Or no?
Uh, Steve, Steve King is the fire, and then, I don't know the, I think it's Lonergan. I think Mark Lonergan's the police, so.
Beth Hopkins?
Yep.
That'd be good to get that known in advance. Um, and then I guess the other thing I could bring up under new businesses is just wanna thank everyone for the opportunity to go up to the Illinois Municipal League Conference in Chicago and get some training. Some of the different topics that I was able to visit was, uh, they had a really good discussion with the watchdog groups, with Edgar County Watch Dogs. I know a lot of the aldermen went in on that one. One of the other workshops I went to was on attracting millennials, some things to do to attract them, and millennials are about the size of the baby boom generation, and... on that one, one of the other workshops I went to was on attracting millennials, some things to do to attract them, and millennials are about the size of the Bay Boom generation, and they're not rooted in place yet, so they're mobile, and that might be something that we should be working on to attract people into town, something that Alderman Adams mentioned previously was USDA has grants available for rural communities, and part of their designations for towns of less than twenty thousand, so there are numerous grants and, and money is available either for municipal purposes or for us to pass through to businesses, did you want to say something?
Yeah, the organization Next Century Cities that I helped Jacksonville be a part of was on a conference call Friday during the IML, which I wanted to thank the city for there too, and that four hundred and twenty million Reconnect grant is the second round, the fifty million was the first, and there are communities that like are part of Next Century Cities, like Bloomington was on the phone about how they had three million out of that fifty million, and the commission board is the exact same board as previously, and the board members are on a email that I can reach out to, so I'll try to be doing that as well as, I'll go ahead after you, after some of the things I learned at IML.
Yeah, okay, so another, another workshop I went to was broadband, something we've talked about often on, but it's something where even with five G coming in, and existing internet suppliers or providers in town, it's not good enough, I have, I know of two husbands of professors who have moved into town, and the very first thing they had, and they're both software developers, and they spend a lot of time on the phone, and spend a lot of time on their computer, they have to be on conference calls all the time, and their very first job when they came to town was to fight with local internet providers to get enough service, enough high-quality service, so they could do their jobs, so this is something where if we want to attract workers who can live wherever they want, but need to communicate, our current internet offerings are not of enough quality to provide that job opportunity, two more things, went through the traditional fighting blight, and I guess the good thing is, is that we already have the municipal court system, I guess that was brought in under Humboldt and under Mayor Tendik, so we're doing a lot of things right to handle local problems, and one last thing is, the very first thing that they had up on the screen when they did the opening session, and they were talking about, or they were showing images of great things in Illinois that are good services to provide to taxpayers and things that attract people to your town, and one of the big photos they had up, it was of a bicycle trail, a recreational trail, so I'm glad of the progress that we've made at Lake Jacksonville to provide that to the community, and looking forward to, hopefully we get that state grant soon to complete the final phase of that project, when, if the state grant doesn't come through, hopefully we can provide the gambling money to get that done, get that project done.
And then looking at another project to make it a complete trail around the lake with gambling funds, to where it's not just a one, down there and back, if everybody could be able to go around, I've had a lot of friends, I have my Fisher license, D N R came and checked me last year, the lake is a popular spot, but there's only one place that they go to look, and that's out by the spillway or on Point One, two places, but that, there should be more opportunities for people to be able to access the lake shore to fish, and I think a trail would probably help make that more accessible if it went completely around the lake in some aspect, also, the IML conference, thank you very much for inviting me to, there was a vendor that was talking about equipment and with excess equipment from cities, and I'll have to go back and look at his card to see if that will apply to the little stuff that the chief had talked about, but there were a lot of things with fighting blight and the funding that can go into areas that was very interesting, as well as, I might note that the most popular item on the, the agenda was cannabis, the attorney's session was out the door, and the next, the Alderman, the elected official session was completely packed with people standing on the stage, and most people turned around when they saw how many people were standing outside of the room because they couldn't get into it, so we're deciding at a, a hot topic at a time when the state is looking at what should be done for our community, because there are a lot of people out there that have been recreational users for a long time, we just haven't accepted them into our community like what we'll be doing on January first, so I do think that that IML link that I sent is something that everybody should look over, there's a big portion of it that's just frequently asked questions, and you know, maybe that'll fill out some of the ones that anybody has any over, so.
Very good, thanks, any other new business? Is there a motion? Oh yeah, we need a motion for, to deal, and is there a second?
A second.
For?